Okay, Board of County Commissioners are now in session. There's no changes to the agenda, so we'll start right in. First item is commissioners invoices, commissioners reports. We've had a conversation on the credit card and that was corrected. We wasn't going out far enough on numbers, but in talking with Christie and looking at it, the totals are still the same even when it isn't.
The one I emailed you this morning is the total.
I'm sorry. And this one here is a new copy, it has all the totals. And then on our invoices, one thing that I wanted to point out is we had to pay the state the property that we auctioned off. We don't make any profit on that, and so if you look at this final page, we paid the state the excess, and so, Christie...
So how that happens is when we have a tax deed sale, the first step we have to do is if there's any excess proceeds, so if the property sells for more than the property taxes that they're owing and the costs, then I take that dollar amount, look and see if there's any lien holders. If there's no lien holders, then we turn the money over as unclaimed property and the owners of record have the abilities to claim those funds. So we just basically are pass through on all of that, other than paying the taxes that are owed hopefully.
Okay. And also, just for your information, there's a couple of ARPA items on this that we started to pay, and so one of them is doors in the lobby, driver's license, and then the tank on the, for the water truck.
Those are the equal books and also the locks that you mentioned, the department's signing, but we need to have you sign them because they are on the... And I will have them try to watch that better. And if I could get those invoices back because they were on this batch.
Okay.
We need those discounter checks. And I also have another invoice. I need to have the elected official sign that one. But because Jason had been anticipated taking care of my home, so we'll request him that he get paid one mile mileage.
Also along that line, Dave Martinez went to Boise, unmistakating his own vehicle, and we agreed to pay half.
Okay.
Mileage on that. A motion?
Ms. Chair, I'd move that we approved the commissioners invoices, credit applications and commissioners reports as presented.
Been in DC, haven't you?
It's just a little, little off.
All right, we have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have salary rate approval forms.
Can you grab the mileage version up and hand that to Jason, please? He needs to sign it, and then also we need to get a code.
Jason?
Have Terry call the office.
You want these two?
Yes, I need those two back. Thank you.
All right, next we have salary rate approval forms. Have you seen any concerns there?
Ms. Chair, I'd move that we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, it looks like we're a little ahead of schedule. Tony, you want to go ahead?
Can I sit here?
Mayor Brad's not here.
Sure. All right. Tony Moning, Bannock County Sheriff.
Lieutenant Johnson, Bannock County Sheriff.
So we're here to ask approval to continue the medication for opioid use disorder. I received the most current and updated contract. I know you have one, right?
I pulled one out of the packet.
Okay. There's a, I just got this one late yesterday evening, so that's the one that actually spells out the cost.
Okay.
The current cost for right now, and to continue that, five thousand a month for the maximum of 15 people.
The maximum, how many?
Fifteen. Fifteen inmates. And then if the average exceeds 15, it's basically five dollars a day for anybody above and beyond that.
Is it 5,000?
A month.
If you get one or if you get 15?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're averaging about nine or 10.
The previous contract was 10?
Was.
That's the number?
Fifteen, fifteen for the pilot.
But they were...
And it was three months.
And then asking for 10.
Yeah, 15 for the pilot.
Okay. Asking for five a month, 5,000 a month.
5,000 a month.
And this will be paid through opioid funds, since that's 100% the purpose of what we receive those funds for.
Right. So legal has not seen that yet.
Okay.
Their legal had sent it to me yesterday, right before I left to come home, so...
So, sorry, could you just repeat that? So it's paid for through what again?
So we receive opioid settlement monies.
Yeah.
Currently, we have $336,000.
And this is paid 100% through that?
And this will be paid through that program.
Correct.
We have very designated uses, specific uses for what these funds can be used for, and this is exactly the program that we can use it for, is to try and help prevent and treat people with the opioid addictions.
Yeah. Okay. So we've run a pilot for three months?
Three months.
How the, what's your feelings?
I think it's working well.
How do you define working well?
Everybody seems to be following the rules and set, set in place, and seems to be helping the inmates, so...
So one of the, one of the things they mentioned, mentioned in here was only a 21% participation rate? Is that...
Well, you gotta qualify. Not everybody can just want to be, you know, on the list, you gotta qualify.
Right, but I thought that 21% of those, of those that qualified, or was that 21% of all potential?
I think all that...
Okay, did I misread?
Have qualified. Did you receive that, the report on that?
That's what I'm, that's what I looked at.
I think also within the pilot program, it's a learning curve of best practices.
100%.
And then moving forward, you know, what we can do better.
Yeah, no, I, that's where I was kind of going. But what are the things that you've learned, and is there, what's the likelihood of increasing that 21% to a greater?
Well, funny thing is, the thing I think we've really learned is that the screening is working, as far as who qualifies and who doesn't. And in fact, there's probably some more screening that we need to do on the law enforcement side, is what we found, that might have, I mean, I think there was a couple that probably shouldn't have qualified, or the captain and the lieutenant could have prevented it from qualifying. And I think, and it's more of, like, just one example, we had one that was an escape risk, and so movement amongst, you know, within our facility is not a really good thing to have that person that tried multiple escapes in several jails, not having him have that availability of moving around the jail, so, stuff like that is one thing. But I think as far as the feedback we're getting, and we've just recently closed the loop with getting services for our tribal members. So they have actually services now, and then I think currently we have two tribal members that are in the program, and now they're gonna come and actually come inside our facility and talk to these, those particular inmates, and then when they transition away from our facility, they'll have services waiting for them in Fort Hall. So that just happened last week.
Okay. And the last question I had was on the Suboxone, where they're talking about combining the two paths into one. What's, explain that to me a little bit.
So, was it as far as the strips versus the pills?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're just gonna do strips or you're gonna do pills?
Pills.
Pills?
Crushed pills.
Okay.
Because the transfer, the chance for them to transfer it is a lot less likely for them to take it from the pill pass to transfer it in within our, within our jail facility.
Okay. And then you're just doing one dose of Suboxone?
One a day. Yep, same time every day.
Yeah, 10 p.m.?
Yep.
Okay. So these guys, you know, to get in this program, they have to be, you have to estimate that they're gonna be incarcerated at least two weeks.
Correct.
To get involved with this. And so then they're getting, every evening they're getting a crushed pill?
Correct.
How do they take that? Do they have it in something, or they just?
Water.
Just with water?
Yep. And then they can't leave the pill pass area until it's absorbed.
And what exactly does this pill do?
It blocks the cravings for...
Okay.
The opioids.
And then when they're...
And blocks the ability to be, to withdraw.
And then when they're released, then they're given a supply of, so you just give them seven pills?
Correct.
And tell them, I guess, crush these things and take them like you've been doing?
Right.
And you give them a reference to where they can continue?
The hope is, we're trying to transition to the point to where that resource outside meets them in our lobby.
Oh, okay.
And gets them to the facility. And that's what Fort Hall wants to do.
Right.
So the plan, we hope, instead of just kicking them out to the street, hopefully we can work to where one of those resources can actually, and maybe, and get them set up.
Right.
Outside.
In the certainly part, has it not been a warm handoff like that?
I think it's, it's hit and miss.
Hit and miss?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know the Fort Hall loop wasn't there until within the last week and a half, and we just found that person, and they actually came down to our office, and they're pleasantly surprised that we were doing it, so...
Yeah, I would anticipate that would get your numbers up a little bit with that warm handoff consistently.
Yes. And then bringing them, those same resources in our facility prior, getting familiar with them so that they know it's not just a stranger that shows up, they're, they're familiar with them, familiar face when that, when that does happen.
And how long do people need to be taking these pills before, I mean, it's just like, do we have any idea?
I, that's not a question I can answer, huh?
I could answer, but I won't.
Yeah.
All right. So a couple of questions. So this has been a pilot program?
Correct.
With kind of an end date or a checking in time and stuff? I didn't see anything where there's a check and balance system in here?
We, it's probably, we're talking till the end of the fiscal year and then evaluate where we go from there.
Okay.
As far as, do we include this in the next contract? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't see any place where...
We talked about it in the meeting.
And stuff. So I'm in favor of moving this forward, but I'd like legal to review it. I mean, we haven't reviewed all of our contracts, so...
The ultimate goal is to reduce recidivism, correct?
Correct. And hopefully that they don't, because a lot of times when they leave, we talked about reduce that overdose, when they, if they happen to go back and use, and they're going back to that current level of usage they were using, that they don't overdose.
Right. Well, it's too early to tell any recidivism yet, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, I agree. So Ms. Chair, I would move that we approve this pending legal review, so that way you guys don't have to come back if legal gives us the okay.
And we could sign it on Tuesday. I mean, there's no sign lines here in Hink Forest right now, so, okay?
All right.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any? Yes. All right, thank you.
Scott?
Scott Crowther, Event Director, Business Manager.
Janice Hallinan, Administrative Assistant for Snake River Online Opportunities High School.
So we were approached by Snake River's, Snake River Opportunity High School about holding a graduation ceremony in the amphitheater. We have done this, and we do it for a couple of different schools still. They would like to hold a graduation on May 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for about 50, 50 folks to come.
Let's move to about 100.
Let's move to what?
100 people.
About 100 people, which is, which is fine, the number's okay. I know in the past, we've, we've charged about $500 somewhere in that area, just for setup and tear down of the, of the venue, and so I guess that's what, what I would suggest for our, for our fee for this event.
That's what we've done in the past. Don't have any concerns about it. Covers our costs.
Yep, that's all I care about. So Ms. Chair, I'd move that we approve the graduation request as presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Tony, Tony Lynn?
Hi.
The next contract we have is for 4th District Rodeo Queen Contest. They've done this every year, they come up and they use the indoor arena for a short period of time, sorry, Connie, would you like to introduce yourself?
What I'm asking is to use the indoor arena, just for like a short period of time, right before Mr. Freed will do his tumor brain that Saturday morning. What I'm looking at is Saturday, the 30th of May, start the, use the indoor at 8 o'clock and probably be out of there at 9:00, and then go up to Building B and do the rest of the contest, which would be the speech and the modeling, the test and the interview. I'd sweep up everything afterwards, clean it, and, you know, put the chairs and everything away after I'm done.
And the District 4 rodeo, I think that we've already approved their contracts for this year. They use the indoor arena for their rodeo and their district day as well. And they do, along with some of their fee waivers, they do, do some service for us at the venue, at the facilities.
So which district are you?
District 4.
Okay.
So this is just, this is the queen portion of it?
It's just before the rodeos start. So that way I have the queen crown before all the rodeos start, so she can reign during the high school rodeos and then prepare for the state high school at the same time.
So the arena, the indoor arena is rented that day by Chris. He comes in and runs his ropings that day, but he doesn't come until 10 o'clock. So we, plan on sending our folks in to groom and get the arena ready for him. We just sent him in a little bit earlier to groom and get the arena ready for her.
I only have like two, three contestants, so I'll be in and I'll be for.
But that won't mess you up, groom it for Chris and everything?
No, it won't. It won't. The grooming in the arena, there will be no impact to the arena stuff. From our standpoint, we just get our guys in there probably an hour earlier.
Okay.
So there's no additional fees from what you're already renting the facility out for?
And, and they've come to the venue every year for several years, and there's never been a fee associated with it. So it is about 100 and, no, $210 worth of actual fees, six hours for B building, $150 and 60 hours for one hour of the indoor arena. So that would be the, the actual fee waiver amount.
But they do come and do some service for us?
Yeah, and that's part of the greater rodeo...
Right.
...thing that they do, and so...
I'm okay with this.
So my, you, John, motion?
Ms. Chair, I'd move that we approve the 4th District Rodeo Queen Contest.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, where's Hall?
He is on vacation. Tristan should be here. We're waiting for Tristan, yeah.
Okay.
The mayor might be out there. The mayor's out there.
Is the mayor out there?
I think he's out there. Oh, here he is, right on maritime. Just walked by Tristan's window.
Everybody heard you was coming, mayor.
Yeah, that's not true. What do you got going today?
Oh, Bannock County, just interesting, all the time.
I've been here a million times and I've never seen this kind of participation, so there's something going on. It's nice to see everybody here, though, that's awesome. Good to have people involved in the government, so...
True story.
Always look forward to this stuff. Well, it snowed this morning.
Well, it's Simplot games.
That's right. It is the Simplot games, and that's, thank you, first of all, before, I guess I'm ready, you're ready for me to...
Yep.
Before I really go any further, thank you very much for, for having me for a few minutes. This is always good for me to be able to come in front of you and talk to you a little bit about the things that are happening in Pocatello and, and some of the things that are, that are happening in Pocatello that I think can, will affect the, the county. In fact, I think about everything we do in Pocatello affects the county, being, being people look and see, see what happens there, and being the county seat, having you right here in Pocatello definitely has an effect. So thank you very much. I would like to really truly start, I think it's, it's important, and I'm glad the public's here, I think it's extremely important for people to know some of the things that the city of Pocatello and the Bannock County are working together on. One of those things is the two-tone or the toning alert system for our, for our EMS. That was something that was extremely important to, to get through. It definitely has a response, a piece to that where our, where our citizens in Bannock County for ambulance service was, I mean, it was taking a little bit more time than it should have, and so thank you for your leadership in, in supporting that and, and doing that extremely important for our community to have our ambulance system to be able to get out on a timely fashion. We've, we've, as we talked a little bit before, a couple of us, we've, we've had a toning alert system that was faulty. It's, we, it took us about, you know, a couple of times, it took up to a half hour to get our ambulance out in a critical incident. There's no excuse for that, and so this new system is being implemented, it's moving quickly, and so I think that things are really good there. Let me see, oh, I would like to mention the, oh, while I'm on EMS, I might just tell you, last year we had the most calls we have ever had on EMS, we had 9,200 calls last year in January, January 2024. We had 822 calls in January, and January of 2023, we had 679. And so those calls continue to increase, and we don't know what to do to, to help reduce that number, but the more calls that we have, the more money it costs, the more money it costs, everybody ends up paying there. So we're doing an awful lot of things to try to prevent that from happening, but that doesn't happen, you know, overnight, and so it would be nice to, if our citizens would be able to kind of evaluate, and if we have a headache, don't call, you know, because that happens often.
Yeah.
And so we would, we would appreciate that. When we call, we run everybody as fast as we can, and we get them there, and oftentimes when we show up, we have to go to the hospital with it. We've got a limited amount of resources, and that limited amount of resources, if they're all at the hospital, it's tough to, to double those calls up and triple those calls up. And there's, there have been a couple of times where we've had to tell people, sorry, but we can't get there, we don't have enough, we don't have any equipment or any personnel to, to come, and so we don't, we don't like to do that. So we need to, we need to do, do some things there. I might mention a little bit about our airport, our, the Pocatello Airport. I would encourage the, the county to, as they travel, and if they need to do some traveling somewhere to, to use the Pocatello Airport. We've got two flights now, those flights, Delta would like a little bit more, a few more passengers on there, obviously, we need, we need to increase those passengers. We're, but we are at about 50% fill rate throughout for both, both those planes, which isn't really bad necessarily, because those planes have increased in size, they're a lot bigger plane now, and, and so to, to have a 50% rate, obviously, we would like more, and so would, would Delta. And I would just encourage people to, to look and see what the, the cost savings really is out of Pocatello, because when you drive to Idaho Falls, or Idaho Falls or, or Salt Lake, most of us, it's interesting, about 7% of us drive to Idaho Falls, about 65% of us drive to Salt Lake instead of flying out of Pocatello. And drive to Salt Lake, you figure an extra $250, $300 by the time you get there, round trip back and forth, and pay for parking and all that stuff, and so I would just encourage people to, to look and pay attention to that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I did it this last week, and it was fantastic.
Awesome.
And the plane was more than 50% full, both going and coming.
That's what I've experienced, going and coming, every time I've flown out was, has been more than 50%, but we've got some of those days on, well, I shouldn't say that, the day after Thanksgiving, we flew back and there weren't too many of us on the plane, so if you want to travel on a good travel day, the day after Thanksgiving's a great day to travel. And also New Year's Eve is also a good day to travel. But no, it's, it's easy in and out. I love that second, that afternoon flight, because literally I can work until noon and then go to the airport and fly out, and it works great.
Yep.
So it's, it's fantastic. So thank you for, for using that. I might just mention that in Pocatello last year, the crime was reduced by 14%, which is a, a pretty good indicator of where we are and what we're doing in both Pocatello and Bannock County, and so, so it's, it's nice to have those relationships that we have with the sheriff's office and, and things like that. If you notice, in the next few days, on the east side of the, of the city, where you're gonna have smoke and it's gonna be burning, we have a bunch of piles of trees and junipers that we've removed, and we are now burning those, it's, it's a safe time to burn, apparently when it snows heavy, wet snow, it's a good time to burn the piles instead of waiting for it to dry up. So you will see in the next week or so, smoke coming from the east side, it's, it's intentional, and we are on top of it, making sure that that is happening there. As I go down, oh, one thing we are doing in Pocatello right now, we are rebranding Pocatello, the city of Pocatello is getting, going through a rebranding process right now. So I would encourage anybody and everybody that is willing to and would like to have a say in it, that in the next couple of weeks, we will start having people here to, to have some meetings with the public to get an idea of what they would like to see the city of Pocatello, new, Pocatello's new branding looks like. And that new branding is not just a logo, it's literally everything, it's gonna be, we're talking what colors you can use, what shirts you can put a logo on, what your, your business cards look like, everything will be uniform, and so we think that's gonna be something that we've needed for a long time, and so we are starting that, but that should be concluded, quite frankly, fairly, fairly soon, in the, in the idea of what we are doing. And so that rebranding is something, they will be here very quickly. Center Street Underpass, this is going to affect you, it's going to be closed February 20, and it's not gonna open until October. And so we're, we've, we've got, it's about, we've got the 6 million, $5 million from Congressman Simpson went to work with for us, and we've got the, the, some money to, to do that, it's a $6 million project, we've got some other grants, and then the city's putting in some money, but that, all of that stuff is, it's gonna be closed, we're gonna go in there, I think we're gonna try to lower the road a little bit, so, so every now and again, we have a semi truck or something that doesn't follow the rules, and they drive down a road that says no trucks, and they end up stuck under the underpass and, and or trying to turn around and hitting that, that building on the corner there. That, we're gonna, we're trying to, to get that taken care of, that will be done in October. We're gonna try to lower the road, we're gonna put a new, new water line under there, lower the road, redo that, the base and the, the lid, I guess, of the, of the underpass. We've been working with the railroad on that. That, every, if you go underneath there, it's, nobody thinks about what's, what's above you when you're going under a bridge, and, but the concrete and rocks and stuff... above you when you're going under a bridge and, uh, but the concrete and rocks and stuff every now and again are falling off of that and it's been needing to be done since about two thousand seventeen. Uh, Congressman Simpson really, really worked hard and helped us out, they actually had moved that from seventeen to nineteen to twenty-one to twenty-five to thirty-two or three and so he helped us get it moved back up and it'll be taken care of this year.
A bridge, just like that, middle of income, I-15.
That's exactly right, I-15 is exactly like that and I understand their ITD is gonna be replacing that here in the next couple of years, I think and so.
That's a promise we keep here.
That's what I've, I've heard too, but I also know how those work.
Yes.
And I know what happens with, with those, those projects. Like I say, the Center Street Underpass was going to be, um, opened or, or was going to be replaced and fixed in two thousand and seventeen, it may have been fifteen. And, uh, here we are twenty-four and, and we feel pretty confident that we got it bounced up about seven years or eight years from what the state finally planned on doing that. Another thing that we've, uh, we have been doing in the city of Pocatello and it's been, been really, oh, I should talk about before I go to there, I, we've got some, some projects that we're working on right now in Pocatello that I, that I think are gonna be good for the, the entire county and the, the county uses the, a, a lot of the, um, the, the resources we have in Pocatello, but, uh, we have seven pickleball courts that are being built right now. Uh, so pickleball is a, is a big deal and we have seven pickleball courts, we've got four, uh, regular pickleball courts and then we've got three all-inclusive pickleball courts. Those three all-inclusive pickleball courts are, we felt were important to do, we could have added another pickleball court, but we thought it was more important, you've gotta have a little bit wider space and stuff like that for the sidelines. We have a splash pad that will be finished this spring, so pickleball courts will be finished this spring, splash pad will be finished this spring. Uh, Brooklyn's Playground will have a new, uh, surface, if you've been out there lately, the surface on it is, is old, um, and it's used and so we're putting a new surface down on the, on, uh, Brooklyn's Playground. Uh, we are building, uh, two new water slides at our aquatic center, that should be finished this summer, we would have liked it to have been done in the spring, but, uh, it is what it is and we're hoping to see it done in, end of July, first of August timeframe, that, that will be nice, uh, to do that. We're, we are also, if you've ever driven in the cemetery lately, the roads are extremely bad and, uh, that, it's kind of embarrassing, quite frankly, and so we're going to go in this spring and we're gonna repave those roads so that, that we'll have new roads all the way through there. If you've been to a Pocatello Grays baseball game in the last couple of years, you'll know that the Halliwell ball field is in shambles or was in shambles. I didn't realize how bad it really truly was, if you walked into the dugouts there, the, the ceiling was caving in, uh, with, on concrete and so, if you went over there right now, you could not actually walk up and where the stands are because it's, uh, all been removed, the, uh, we're over the top of the dugouts, uh, so we're replacing the dugouts. The school districts worked with us to replace the, the benches on the left field, uh, side, the third base line, uh, those were dangerous bleachers when you would walk up and, and down them and so we've torn all that, those out, we have new bleachers there. We, we've taken and we've removed some of the seats and the stands and so we've widened the staircase, the stairway going up so we can finally get a rail on there to help people in and out, so it's just a, it's been a, a, uh, a big, a big lift for us to, to do that, but we're, we're getting that fixed at the Halliwell ball field, so when you go to watch a baseball game this year, it's gonna be kind of a whole new look. Um, we've got a Jason, uh, Fifth, South Fifth and Jason Street Safety Project going on right now, we applied for a, for a grant, everybody that applied for their grant, received the grant, we'll be adding sidewalks down, uh, South Fifth, um, and so we, we've got the, that, uh, happening. Our project on Hawthorne and Quinn, um, that, that is a crazy deal, nobody would have thought that, uh, and I hate blaming anything on COVID still, but, uh, the light poles for the stoplights, um, have been backordered for a long time. We keep being told that, that they'll be here, we were told they'd be here in, in July and then August and then October and then November, December, uh, February, uh, we're, we're being told March, the end of March now, so hopefully we can get those poles at the end of March so that when you go and do all this improvement for a nice intersection, that used to be a four-way stop, you always wanna be able to put the lights up so it's no longer a four-way stop, but not here, we got to do all this stuff and then put another stop sign down, it's a four-way stop again, so. We're hoping end of March, April timeframe, we'll see those, those poles. I did not realize it, it's something interesting, those poles are all custom-made for all of our intersections and, uh, apparently you can't intermix poles because they are angled the wrong way, they've got the wrong conduits in them, they got, I don't, I don't know why, but they're, they're different, so when you see a stoplight that gets hit and somebody knocks one of those over, it costs us a lot of money and, um, we have a couple extras and for the high accident corners, I guess, but that being said, um, we should be, should have those taken care of and stuff. I might just add, just wrapping up, uh, we've got, we've been very busy looking for grants and working to get grants in, in the city of Pocatello. We've, uh, been, uh, very, very, um, successful at getting grants and we have, uh, we've got eight grants, those eight grants that we have, uh, total about seventy-five and a half million dollars, uh, and I think that's important for people to understand that those grants, uh, are, that seventy-five million dollars, or thirty-seven million dollars, I'm sorry, thirty-seven million dollars that we do not have to ask our taxpayers for to add the things that we need to. One of the grants is a seven-point-seven-five-million-dollar grant on the intersection of North, uh, Main and Craft Road, that is a horrible intersection, we are gonna change the look of that, we are going to add some lights, uh, there, we're going to move Gaethje Road to the west so that we can, uh, we don't have a, a cluster right there at the, at the corner, uh, so we, we, that's something that we've been asked to do, uh, and, um, for years and we finally have the ability to do that because of the grants. Uh, we have an urban forestry grant, as you know, there's a number of trees in our community that are old, that are, uh, every time the wind blows, in fact, today with the heavy snow, we probably have branches falling as we speak. And, uh, so, uh, we've got a grant that, for a million dollars, that we will be able to go in and, uh, replace some trees, uh, remove some trees that are, that are no good anymore and do the things that, that just need to happen with, with those and so, those grants, we've been very successful, we've got thirty-seven million dollars in grants and it's probably gonna cost the city with the, the, um, the grant, uh, the match, the grant match there, it's probably gonna cost the city about, up, up to about two million dollars for that, thirty-seven million dollars and so that's, that's pretty good. We, we, we take advantage of every grant opportunity we can so that we can do what we need to do. One other thing, very, very lastly, and this, this will, this also, uh, will affect the county, is on the South Bannock, uh, South, South Bannock Highway and the connector, I forgot what that connector's called every now and again, I can't remember it right now.
South Valley Road.
South Valley Connector, thank you, the South Valley Connector on, on Bannock Highway, we will be adding a stoplight there, uh, it's been difficult for people to get on and off that road, it's kind of a dangerous area and so, we'll continue to, to do that, so. That's my report, I know you're busy because there's everybody behind me, but, uh, I would stand for any questions you might have.
Questions, comments?
No, appreciate all the work.
Yep.
Just, just that it is a big weekend here in town and we encourage people to come out to Simplot Games, uh, tomorrow morning's breakfast with Fosbury and friends, uh, but boy, to watch these student athletes perform in that facility is, is amazing.
Twenty-two-hundred student athletes from all over the world will be here, it's, it's, you're right, it's, it's an incredible event and so if you have, it's free to the public, Simplot takes care of all of that and so, if, if you have it anytime, then go up and watch these, these athletes, they, they, it will, I think it starts at, I think, five o'clock this evening, there's a ribbon cutting at four-thirty, I believe, and, and then they'll start the thirty-two-hundred and, uh, it will go on till about eleven o'clock tonight and then all day tomorrow and Saturday's a lot of fun, there's records that are broken every, every year and a couple of world records that are broken, it seems like, and so it's always, always exciting to see that and, and, uh, we've got, I think there's seven Olympians, is that right?
I, I haven't seen them yet.
Six or seven Olympians in, in town that, uh, just love to talk to people and so if you see one, go up and talk to them, go and, go and get your picture with them, they, they, they love to tell their story, it's always good to have them, so, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you. Have a great one.
All right, I'm gonna change the agenda just a little bit and let's go ahead and we're representing Howe and, uh, so, this is Planning Development Director discusses recommendations of approval by the Planning Development Council for a zoning ordinance amendment.
Tristan Borkwin, Assistant Planning Director. So we are back before you with the zoning ordinance amendments to discuss moving forward. We had our meeting on February fifth to discuss the solar ordinance section out in Marsh Valley and so now we are here to move forward or to discuss how we would like to move forward with those ordinance amendments. I did want to make one clarification, mostly just for the public because I did have a couple of phone calls this week with some confusion, so the reason we only have Proposal One in the packet is because Proposal One is the only one that has been through a public hearing by council and that's what was recommended for approval to the commissioners. Proposals Two and Three were posted on the website to help spark some interest with the public and get some feedback on what the public would like to see in the ordinance, but neither of those have been reviewed in a public hearing, so that's why those are not part of this packet.
And I've been out to talk to you guys, I've been to our legal and I'll just tell you where I'm at, so everybody don't, where, knows where I'm at anyway. Uh, I've reviewed this, I've looked over things and I would like to send this back. I've reviewed, I've talked with the commissioners out of Caribou County and I think that they have an ordinance that I would like to implement, so I'd like to send this back, we still have forty-five days before our hundred-and-eighty days are up on our moratorium and, uh, so there's plenty of time to have the public hearings, I've visited with our legal team, uh, just to dot, dot the i's and cross the t's, I'd like to send this back to the Planning and Zoning Board and then after their recommendations have come before us again, both of those could be public hearings, but in Caribou County, oh, and the other part that I, I would like to, to reference is that, uh, so this is an ordinance, it, it can be changed over time, but I don't wanna have an ordinance that isn't supportive of where we need to be at this time, I don't wanna let the genie out of the bottle and then try to stick the genie back in the bottle, I wanna make an ordinance that is effective at this time and so, uh, that ordinance is that there is no solar for industrial. If you have a residence, you can have it in your house or on your house or in a property, I, I'm looking at that, their ordinance, I liked it. Uh, three key factors for me are, one, emergency services, we have volunteer emergency service people and, uh, I don't think that we have the proper training right now, I don't think that we have the equipment right now and, and they're volunteers and we're having a tough time getting volunteers anyway. So, and the next one would be, uh, I've talked with Caribou, uh, with Power County and since the wind farms have gone in out there, they have lost revenue and, and I wanna make sure that Bannock County doesn't go backwards. And then, uh, the, the third item that really I have concerns about is the decommissioning, uh, lifespan of fifteen years or twenty years bothers me. We spend two million dollars a year right now, uh, trying to take care of our landfill and, and I don't want the people in Bannock County to be stuck with something of that nature, so those are the three concerns, so I have, uh, it's up for discussion, what everybody else thinks, but when we get through it there, I'm gonna make a motion to send this back and to go in that direction. Jeff? John?
Just to be clear on this, you said no industrial, are you, is your, is what you're looking to do prohibit solar farms?
Yes.
In Bannock County, period?
Yes.
Okay.
So, level-two solar energy systems are systems that do not satisfy the parameters of the level-one and the level-one in their ordinance talks about having it on your house or in your yard or things of that nature and that, so anything bigger than that would, would not be allowed. But I think that, that we need to go one step further, because we're just talking about solar panels, uh, I think we need to have conversations about wind farms. I, I, I think that we're missing part of the boat here and that's where I think that we could combine and have that conversation and do it. One time, like I say, five years down the road, they may have all kinds of new ideas and stuff, fifteen years down the road, but to protect Bannock County, this is my feeling right now.
Okay, um, I would say that I agree with everything you've said, I've studied this extensively, we've received tons of emails from people and I, I was very happy to see that we had a lot of scientific studies referenced, you know, so the concerns you have, I have those same concerns, in addition, when I look at the potential environmental impacts of these, they could be quite significant, I have scientific studies stating that these will, uh, to the extent that they, if we were to have these solar panels in landfills and things of that nature and that they have cadmium or lead in them, that once they break here, it's gonna leach and I have a study here that says there's no way, they will not be leaching into the environment. So anyway, with that, I'd say I share all of your concerns and, uh, and I agree that this is not, um, this is not the time or the place to be installing solar farms.
Jeff?
Well, I've spent the last three weeks trying to find the answers to my questions in regards to how do we write something that doesn't slam the door on solar farms, but allows it to potentially, if we can find a spot for it, and I haven't been able to find significant answers to help me feel better about that and so I'm like Commissioner Moser, my first issue is fire, we do not have the resources right now to take care of that and, and I know that the solar companies say it can be contained and they can do that, but right now throughout the county, it's just an issue that I'm not comfortable moving forward with. Number two, uh, mine's a little bit different than yours, but disposal, there is nowhere near here that will take anything, we have no plans to take it, uh, we don't want it in our landfill, so that creates a problem. Spoken with Kyle out at Roden Bridge and they've had a couple of wind companies approach them and they've given them parameters and the wind companies have gone somewhere else and so that was a good thing. So, I'm, I'm kind of sad, but again, I spent my time, tried to find the right way to do it and I can't find a really, what I felt was a good path forward at this point in time, so Commissioner Moser, I would stand behind a, a no solar projects or wind projects in Bannock County at this time.
So I'd go ahead and make a motion that we send this back to Planning and Zoning, let's make sure that we meet the deadlines and, uh, review Caribou County's ordinance, I think that it's a good one, and, and let's add wind farms, uh, along with solar. We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Please go, please go. Okay, thank you very much, thanks for coming though, but, thank you.
So just for quick clarification, still two public hearings, right? Go back to council and then come back here.
We don't actually have to, I don't believe, but to dot our i's and cross our t's, I wanna make sure that this goes where it needs to go.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right.
Nobody cares about this.
No.
Alisa?
Elise Foster, Planning and Development Subdivision Planner, I have a final plot that we are, um, proposing. I have a final plat that we are proposing for Commission to review and sign. It is Robin Valley Estates located on the corner of Robin and Aramo. They have proposed six lots.
Let's wait just a minute. Could we have you please exit? We are still on video. We have people watching.
Do you want me to start over?
Yes, please.
Okay. Elise Foster, Subdivision Planner. I have a plat that we're asking Commission to review and sign for Robin Valley Estates, Phase Two.
Okay, just start there.
It is a six-lot subdivision. They were granted a design deviation. Instead of an interior road, they were allowed shared approaches. The developer has installed power and melboxes and that was the extent of the construction required within this one. Do you have any questions?
I have, I have a couple and these are just hypotheticals, so it doesn't impact anything moving forward. Six-lot subdivision, how big are the lots?
They range from four-point-one-four to six-point-six-five.
Okay, so going forward in a subdivision like this, would it be practical and/or feasible to create a community well or septic system? Or with the lot sizes that big, is it not feasible?
Under our ordinance, it does not dictate that they have to.
Correct.
And where we don't have jurisdiction over wells, I believe council has played hands off on that at this time. If Commission would like to have different direction on that, I think that's something we could definitely review. We, at this point, from historically what I've seen, if the developer proposes it, then it does move forward, but a majority of the developers are choosing to move forward with individual wells and septics.
Right, but that's not what, what I was asking, because as, as we go forward and we have a housing crisis, we need to try to find ways to, to put more houses in space within the county or whatever. So in a subdivision like this, again, because I'm not in that world, I, I know what our current ordinance says, is it feasible though, or from a developer's standpoint, practical to put in a system like that? Just...
I think it is feasible. I believe there's additional studies that have to be done when they are doing community wells on a regular basis to keep those maintained. So there is some additional cost to the landowners, whereas their individual wells, I don't believe they're required to do all of those individual tests on a regular basis.
And I was just in the Health Department last week and an individual well doesn't have to do the testing. If you have ten or more residencies or cert, twenty-five people or more using the same one, same well, you have to do annual testing and more test, a different test. And so, and then the other part on that, and it's something that we need to be working at, is I believe there's still the moratorium out there, community wells compared to individual wells and whether they're allowed by the contractor to even utilize them. And that's why all the contractors say, well, I can't hold up all my, moving forward, so doing the individual wells puts it on homeowners, since they buy the property.
Yeah. And Jason, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I can, if you, if you want, I can actually do, have the resources to get the information for just how many of those subdivisions have community wells. It'd take me five minutes to get a little report.
It would just be kinda curious, 'cause I think we need to travel down that path, as Commissioner Moser said, about looking at denser places with the community wells and community septics to try to preserve the water and the groundwater and all of that stuff. And so when you brought this one up, I just thought I'd ask the question.
Absolutely.
So, no official direction, but I think it's something that we need to start considering.
Perfect, we'll do some more research on that.
Okay.
It's interesting, I'll tell you that before there were so many regulations, we actually have a substantial number of subdivisions that would be similar to this, that were built, you know, just a long time ago in the seventies and eighties that had community wells. And then when more regulations came in, it was just easier to do a single, so.
Yeah, okay.
I can, I can think of four or five big subdivisions.
Yeah, Wild Horse Up Gears and Jackass.
There's bunches of them that have communities that were built, but they're back in that. Maybe the early nineties would be the cutoff of when it was tough to do them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, any other questions?
Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the plat as presented.
You have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Did you feel like the staff report had enough information in it? 'Cause I remember there was a subdivision that came before you guys and you wanted a little bit more information on what had happened through the subdivision process.
You mean on this particular one?
Yes, yeah.
I didn't see any issues.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was enough information or too much or too little.
No, it seemed like too much this time. Who knows what'll happen next time?
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. George Daniel!
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dan Kendall, Facilities Director.
Ashley Ford, Maintenance Office Coordinator.
Just the monthly update. As far as general maintenance goes, the snow's been pretty light, so it's taken it easy on us, so we're kind of being more proactive up, especially at the Ag Extension Building, trying to prevent flooding from happening again. Every spring it comes down that hill and so we went up there with sandbags and digging trenches trying to hopefully keep the water out of there. For the first time this winter, nothing broke down at the land or building, that was good news.
Is anybody in it?
Just a couple of days out of the week, just in the mornings, so.
Could I, could I stop there for just a sec? I just wanted to ask Commissioner Moser, I know we've talked about selling this building, where, I forget, where are we at on?
Same place we've been.
We're trying to find, we're trying to find a home for the...
What do we have to do to get that done?
We're trying to find a home for the drug testing people.
Oh, is that the holdup?
I think that's the holdup right now.
Okay. Jason might have an update for us if you want to.
Okay. On to that.
Good morning. Jason Die, Trial Court Administrator. We're trying to move forward with finding a new location with that, for the drug testing. And the last meeting I had with the Adel Supreme Court, they were exploring us being able to find additional money to be able to build out bathrooms and to be able to enter a contract at the City Center campus for the Port of Trust building. And the last meeting I had with them, that money is no longer available, so I'm exploring being able to use drug court monies to be able to do that rent and so end it without a buildup. The other option that we have is to be able to pay the twenty dollars a month, uh, per test, twenty dollars a per test, which would increase our yearly thing by thirty thousand dollars in drug testing. We just don't have the, the funds to be able to cover that. So we're kind of back at the joint board and we'll have a meeting soon to be able to give a new price without a buildup. And the only issue that we have is if we use that facility, is we have to enter into a five-year contract and it goes up three percent each year. And our, our problem, our concern is if we enter into a five-year contract and we're kind of stuck with a contract that Ava held for those five years, which we wanna be able to explore and more options instead of that, instead of being stuck with them for five years.
There you are.
Okay, thanks for the info.
As you guys asked, we got the large filing cabinets out of the Foreigners Office. Got those all done, it's like eighteen-hundred pounds of metal in those cabinets, so we've got the levers rekeyed, so it's not just the H R key to get into that part of the building, so. Got that taken care of. Yesterday was our annual fire extinguisher testing and Monday will be the alarm and fire suppression testing, so we'll do that one. No one's here. Kind of been a tradition every year to do it on President's Day. As far as projects go, D M V project, the cabinets have been ordered, the countertops have been ordered, so we'll get that going as quick as we can. We're gonna do half at a time, so we're not shutting all the way down, but do four windows at a time. Should work out pretty well. That'll give them the more ergonomic and workstations that they've been allowing, so. Then as Shanda gets done with her, her work, we'll get the engineering for the H VAC and all that stuff that we're gonna do later, but wanted to get a head start on, on the stuff that doesn't require a permit. Historical museum, I sent some pictures out, hopefully you saw kind of what they're up to there. We're just kind of keeping a low-key eye on it, just make sure it's, we're feel good about what's going on. But it's a lot of work on that one, it's a big project. Hopefully they're done in February, but I guess Lynn retired and the news lady has been emailing me pretty regularly on anything that she needs or an update, so she's been helpful on that end of it. The first and second phase at Juve are done and then we're, we're shooting for a March first move-in date for the last, those four offices and five offices that you came and left at.
Yeah.
We're thinking March first will be the move-in date for that, so we're excited to get that one wrapped up. It's looking really good. And Jail Boiler, I heard that the electrician's gonna be there Monday, Tuesday, and I think that's kind of the last trade that needs to go through. I'm sure the paperwork trail will go on for a couple of months, but as far as the work goes, I'm thinking like Tuesday they might be done.
Now this is where we need to clap.
Yeah.
This has been a year and a half.
Yeah, it looks really, really good. Levi's done a great job keeping an eye on everything. That really sets that jail up to good things for a long time. As unfortunate as it was, it needed to kind of be done and it was kind of, I don't know, maybe a blessing, but it's gonna be in good shape for a long time out there, so that's a good thing. And Germaine's courtroom, courtroom three-twenty, still kind of in the design phase of what, she's kind of getting a feel for what she likes and doesn't like in this two-eighteen, which I want her to do.
Yes.
And we'll make a plan accordingly to make it what she wants and what works for her when she moves back up, but, but not just for her, but any judge that might go in there and use it and wanna make it work. So in the design phase and she's picking out samples of this and that, kind of that slow time of, I wanna get a permit going, but I can't quite yet, but we're doing light demo in there while we, while we can, stealing tiles and getting furniture out and that kind of thing. Raring to go on that one. I'll let Ashley talk about the cleaning contractor.
Yeah, so everything with the cleaning contractor for the in-b buildings here, the only one that's different is the D six. So our night owl contractor here, everything's going good still with them. I got ahold of Ashley Bringhurst over at D six and she put me in touch with Versatile Cleaning and that's who they've decided to go through. So I was able to get in contact with the owner there and they got it all in motion to start on February first and so that's been going since then and I haven't had any complaints or concerns or issues with any of that going on, so we're in good shape there.
Good.
And the last little tidbit is the civil engineer promised he would be done on the Sixth Street, the civil engineering piece of it on March first, so hopefully get that piece of the puzzle and get moving forward on that one.
Good.
Okay?
Good.
All right, there's no questions, I guess we're done.
I just have a quick question. We've talked about it several times for moving that wall over there and if we do just that portion of it, it's not really gonna be an expensive project?
Yeah, I can think the most expensive part of that is just if we take the wall out and the flooring's missing in that spot, so it'll be a new carpet and maybe a, a patch that ceiling back together. There was three projects that were kind of maybe in your realm that I will, I'm waiting for some prices on the K F O deals with Mark, but I think I'll bring before the Commission a, a project for that, a project for that window and door that goes into one-oh-eight and then a vault door. So I will get...
Okay.
When I have all three of them priced out, I'll bring them. I, I would think it'll be the next two weeks I'll have those prices and get them ready to you guys set up a meeting for that.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Shanda?
Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer. I have a procurement update for the board today, starting at the top with public works on roadships. We are looking at a couple options to potentially piggyback to speed that procurement up just a little bit. I did get some additional information, Commissioner Moser, in regards to our past, what we've done in the past, is that we purchased the material, but we pressed ourselves and we also did way fewer miles in the past than we are looking at doing this year. If I understand, what I was told from Road and Bridge correctly, once you lay a new road, within two years, then you need to go back and put a chip seal on top of it and then it's good for another seven. So we have quite a few roads that hit that mark this year that we're going to need to do additional on. That's what kicked it into the procurement phase this time, but we are hoping just to piggyback off somebody and get them moving just as quickly as they can this year.
Thank you.
The next one for the event center, the grandstands replacement. The materials list has been sent out to Dan and Scott to confirm what they need and how they want to move forward on that. There was a discussion in the hall just a bit ago about the type of material that they're looking at getting, so it looks like they're gonna receive some changes, but we'll get that one sent out just as soon as they can confirm what they're going to need to make that project move forward. On the forensic pathologist building shell, that has a pre-bid next Wednesday at nine a.m. here in the Commissioner's Chambers. On the sheriff's, the detention plumbing renovation project, we had a pre-bid meeting this week and questions are due the following week on that one, and so that one's moving forward as well. On the architectural services for the ARPA projects for the next year, that bid closes on Tuesday. We had a question and answer period and didn't receive any, but we've got some good traction as far as people that are asking for it, so that one's moving along as well. On the public works guardrails, that one closes on Monday at five and same thing. We had a question and answer period with none received and so that one will move forward. Both of those will be opened on the twentieth, Tuesday at eleven. And the final one is the Road and Bridge Fuel Project. We did receive three, three bids on that one. We are reviewing those bids for compliance and we anticipate coming before the board with a recommendation to award next Thursday, on the twenty-second. And if there were any questions?
No, there ain't.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jason?
Hello, again, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Jason Die, Trial Court Administrator. We have the Comfor murder trial coming up, starting February twentieth and at that time we, for the voir dire or the jury selection, we have two-hundred, oh, well now it's down to one-hundred-and-ninety people coming in for jury selection. And up until this date last week, we were gonna try to do it within Judge Conroy's and do two phases, but we found out that there will be issues with appeals if we do that and so we tried to find a different location. We, it's kind of bad timing, 'cause there's a lot of activities at ISU. We tried the Chubik City Hall, but it just didn't quite meet our needs for that. And so right now the only facility that would meet our needs is the ICCU Alumni Center. And that, and so we've talked with them, we've reviewed it, it looks like it will meet everyone's needs and we have a contract there. It'll be a thousand fifty dollars a day to be able to rent it and we have it reserved for three days, but if it, we feel like it, we could be completed within two and they won't charge us for the third day if, if we are completed at that time. so right now the only facility that would meet our needs is the ICCU Alumni Center. And so we've talked with them, we've reviewed it, it looks like it will meet everyone's needs, and we have a contract there. It'll be a thousand fifty dollars a day to be able to rent it, and we have it reserved for three days, but if it, we feel like it could be completed within two, and they won't charge us for the third day if we are completed at that time. And so we're just requesting that you review that contract and consider signing it.
Where do these funds come from?
There's a trial expense under the District Court Fund for the Comfor trial, there's about thirty thousand, five thousand, five hundred have spent, spent for the grand jury's portion of it, but this would be addressed under that line item in the District Court Fund.
Okay. Questions, comments?
How much, how much capacity do you need to be able to do this? How much seating would need to be available?
We need a hundred and ninety seats. We need the judge to be, have his own table with his court.
So it's about two hundred some odd?
Yeah, so a hundred and ninety seats plus the, plus about thirty to forty seats for the public. We're going with fifty, so about two hundred and fifty seats, plus tables and stuff take more, more area for that, so that's why the Chubik City Hall didn't work for us.
So did you look at the Veterans Building at all? I don't think it's big enough, I'm not sure, but did you?
We did check with them, and it wouldn't work for our needs for that.
And the prob, one of the problems with Veterans Building is the handicap accessible.
Right, right, that's true, yeah.
Plus parked.
The two hundred cars approximately was one of the issues that we ran to, and so that at the Veterans Center was checked off our list fairly early. Any other, any other week, we would have been able to maybe find a cheaper alternative, but there's just a lot of activities, the Simpot Games, the wrestling tournament, STEM thing at ISU, and so.
If you need a big space in the future, one place I looked at recently was the Museum of Clean off to the side of there, they have this huge room that'll hold eight hundred people. And just so you're aware of it, and I don't remember what the parking capacity is, but it's better than the Veterans Hall, so just something to keep in mind.
That's great, thank you for that information.
Motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the contract as presented.
Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
As far as getting.
Been out there for a long time.
Yeah, as far as getting the contract, they're asking for me to fast set up today. Is it after this meeting?
It'll be, it'll be on Christie's desk.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Christie Clausor.
Christie Clausor, contractor. I have before the board an ARPA update. Like to start with, I got clarification on obligation reporting that will be due on April thirtieth of twenty-four. Per the federal guidelines, a recipient must return any funds that have not been obligated by December thirty-first of twenty-four pursuant to orders placed by property and services or entry into contracts of awards and similar transactions that require payments other than funds in the amount reported to the Treasury by April thirtieth of twenty-four. As that estimate of funds, the recipient will expend to comply with requirement under federal law and regulation or provision of the award terms and conditions to which recipient becomes subject as a result of receiving the funds. Basically, that means that on my April reporting for quarter ending March thirtieth, I have to have this list one hundred percent final. Once I report what's gonna be obligated, and that includes obligating by category, we cannot change that. So if we have a project that I report is obligated, we find out in May that we're not gonna be able to do that project, those monies go back. That also means that, well, we can't change the project, so if we wanna do a million dollars and I put it in as a category for public safety, and it no longer qualifies as public safety, the money goes back. It's really kind of putting our feet to the fire on what we're gonna do. Also, the projects have to be completed by twelve thirty-one of twenty-four unless we have.
I'm sorry, have to be completed by when?
Twelve thirty-one of twenty-four unless we have a contract with a vendor to complete the work. So that means on the jail roof, if those manufacturer, if we don't get that manufacturer sign off by twelve thirty-one of twenty-four, we have to pay that final bill.
Or under contract.
That is actually is under contract, so that's under consent.
And if it's under contract, is there any subsequent deadline, or could it go a couple of years down the road?
September thirtieth of twenty-six. All monies will have to be expended.
So nine thirty, twenty-six, all monies must be spent?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm hoping we don't eke out to that point, because I don't know if that means Bennett County has to be expended by nine thirty, and then I do my payment in October, reporting. I'm guessing what that means, that's what that means, but let's not find out.
And what is the, what was the April date you just, you gave us?
April thirtieth.
And what has to be done on that date?
I have to report all of the obligations of projects. So here's what I'm hoping to do, and that the board will allow me to do. I wanna have a report, or I wanna have a meeting on April fourth where we will review this list, try and say, okay, these are goes, these are not, these are iffy, and then on April eleventh, that's the drop div date where we won't make any more changes, because my ARPA report is not user-friendly, and it tends to take me a little bit to get done.
April eleventh, you said?
Yeah, I want that to be our last meeting. And then what I'll do is on April fifteenth, I'll start that report, because there's a lot of times there's, I don't have all the information, so I need to bounce back and forth between it, plus I have another full-time job that sometimes gets in the way of being able to just do ARPA reporting. So I'm hoping that you'll agree with the April eleventh deadline, so that we can get through what these items are gonna be.
Let me, can I ask you a question on this? Since we're up against this pretty serious crunch time, and I know you do a lot of things, would you need to have some additional help to be able to ensure that you can get all this done?
I.
Because with this amount of money, I would be inclined to make sure we had it.
I have Mandy in my office that's helping me do the ARPA reporting. The problem is, the system is not friendly.
Right.
I already have a grasp on these projects, because, well, as good as a grasp as I can get, or anybody in my office can get, because I know what's going on with them. I have Caitlin that is setting up all the projects as departments are doing them, but I'm trying to funnel it all through one person, because if we have too many hands in the pot, then you don't have as much control over how things are doing, you don't have the knowledge when you get ready to do the report of little problems here and there. So I'm trying to keep it close, but I do have support from Caitlin and also Mandy.
Yeah, this is, I mean, we're talking about a lot of money here. If we need to spend, whether we're having to provide, have some of our people do extra work and compensate them for that, or bring in extra people that we can move things aside to free up time, if you find it necessary, to get this done, you know, I'd be inclined to do that, because it would be a small price to pay for not losing a million dollars.
The biggest thing that would help me out is extreme communication. If I can have, which Dan's great with, talking to me about keeping me up on projects, I met with him before I put this list together, if I can have communication on procurement, what our deadlines are for things like that, communication with the departments on status, where we're at with things like that, that's the other reason I wanna kind of keep it close with just me, is because if I have too many people reaching out to too many different people, then there might be some faltering in that communication. So just communication is gonna be the key.
I've visited with Christie, and I actually wanna have an ARPA meeting every month, and we review this list and where we're at, so that we're not, I don't, I don't wanna go till the length of April and that be, well, okay, this first time, or the fourth of April. I want, next month I wanna have this same meeting, where are we at, and where's the projects, and so by, by the fourth of April, we've got the money allotted wherever it's gonna go.
And I'm actually hoping to have two meetings next month. I don't want any more meetings that we normally need to have, but I think in March, if we can have two meetings, a lot could potentially change. We should have the architect figured out by then, we should have engineers figured out by then, some of the deadlines that we're up against right now should be coming to fruition, so that might be able to provide us some updates. And then, so basically, if that's okay, I wanna have a meeting, two meetings next month, and then we'll have the two meetings in April, just as fillers.
And that, that goes right along with what John just said, it's a lot of money, and we need to make sure that we're covering all bases.
So just to update the board on, on the actual projects that we have, where we're at, I did put some comments in red, just because those are the areas where I'm a little bit concerned. We start with the jail roof, again, we're still waiting on that manufacturer sign off. The Bennett County events startup, those monies will be spent this year, I don't have any problems with that. The nine-one-one microwave, that'll be done this summer. The McCammon Fire Station, I'm still waiting on a timeline of when they're gonna start that project, I haven't received anything on that. The forensic pathology, we're waiting on the shell bid to know how that's gonna move forward. I believe that's the end of March, so that one's a little worrisome, only because of the timing of it. E-pole books, those are ordered, so we should have those in plenty of time. When I met with Dan and Ashley, he's not concerned with the fire suppression, the HVAC, the LED, or the acoustic ceiling, he thinks we'll be able to get those done in time. The DMV counter will be done this summer, that miscellaneous money is more annex money that he may need pending how the engineer work comes in on those annex projects. He's not worried about that. The cooler for the corner, we need to wait and know what's going on with forensic pathology for that. The two boilers, we're waiting on the engineering work to be able to start that, that's in red, it probably shouldn't be, because you were comfortable with that, correct? So that should be in black. The east entrance and Sixth Street, we should have engineer on March first, there might be additional funds that are needed on that, that's what Dan said, again, he's not too worried about that being done, because that should be under contract. However, we do really need some of that money to go towards public safety, so I'm hoping the scope of that project, when it gets a little bit more clearly designed and communicated out, that we can throw some of those monies into that category, just simply because we need that right now. When I get to the bottom, I'll show you, we're over on the general category of projects.
Can I make a comment here real quick? I believe that when we picked all these projects we were gonna do, I think we left on the table a quite a bit of work over at the jail. I can't remember what the amount of.
And I'm gonna touch on that in a minute.
Okay.
Let's see, the remodel above elections, still waiting on the scope of work for that. We might want to talk about possibly deferring that project, only because if we do it now and have to have a contractor do it, it's gonna cost twice as much.
Well, after the walkthrough, yes, or the other, last week, I'm, my whole plan has changed there. I don't know about you, but, but my vision had changed, I mean, realizing there, three sixty-five, you know, a year, and, and all that needs to happen, I think that we need to talk about a different plan.
There's, there's a lot that has to happen there, it's true.
Okay, so if the board decides they wanna take that off the list, right there, we have one point two million dollars that we need to reallocate. Continuing on the dump truck and glades, those I believe are supposed to be delivered before the end of the calendar year, so we should be fine on that. The two barns for the fair board, I need procurement dates on those. We did talk about needing some additional funds on that, I, my understanding.
What do we want that facility to look like? And then the other part about that is, because we didn't budget for last year's building.
Right, but we talked, you and I had talked about possibly trying to present that when the bids were presented, and then to find funding options at that time, because we wouldn't be obligated for those buildings.
And then that just gives us the opportunity, though, with their input, and so I'll, I'll make, or we can make contact there and to let them know what the deadlines are, and fill it.
So those two barns, depending on build date, contract, that might be a little bit tight on that project. The water truck is in progress, you guys signed the bill this morning. The tractor, my understanding is Scott's looking at the state surplus, so that hopefully won't be a problem. The grandstand seating, I need an updated calendar on that as soon as it's available. The cameras, we still need a scope of work on where we're gonna do cameras, and I believe that's gotta go through procurement, so we need to figure out when we can get that list put together, and who's gonna push that through.
And I'll talk with Braden on that one, and make sure where we're at.
I'm gonna circle this and just put that up.
People were supposed to have put information into Braden already, and I don't, I haven't heard anything, so.
Let's see, the windows for veterans, that's in progress. The boiler, I haven't gotten an update on that from veterans. I'm looking at you, John.
Yeah, I don't know where we're at on that.
Okay, that's only twenty thousand, if we needed to push that one off, that wouldn't be a huge deal, but we would, it would be nice to reallocate those dollars if it's not gonna get spent. The roof is in progress. The mosquito truck, there was a little bit of change on that one. My understanding from Buddy is there was gonna be a delay in the purchase through the vendor that we had, so they're looking at buying it closer to home, so we should have that one in March. The lighting for historical should be completed in August, the wet cells, we should have a contract for that, if it's not gonna be completed by the end of the year. The ADA doors should be done next month. Upgrading central is gonna start next month, it should be completed in twenty-five, but we should have a signed contract, according to Tony.
And the ADA doors are the ones we signed today?
Yes, pardon me, yep. The stucco will be done this summer, the booking shower will be done in a couple of months. D station, deputy station and EPOD, Tony said there should be a contract and it'll be done, if not by the end of this calendar year, like within a couple of months in twenty-five. Showers and C pod should be completed by the end of the calendar year. So those are the updates that I have received as of last night at four thirty, when I reset this to the board. What I was hoping to do is, if there's, so we've already identified obviously that one project isn't gonna be able to go through within the timeframe, I think we need to put together that backup plan list. I have the items that were originally put on, that we had on the second page, that we didn't approve when we had the meeting, I think in December or January, where we voted yes and no on projects. I can put that together as a list, and then I can get with Dan and see if there's some other projects that he thinks would be easy to get done and contract out, so that we could get those done. I know yesterday when we were briefly talking, there's like, we've got sidewalks that are in dire need of repair, we've got parking lots that need done, so maybe I can compile that list, and then also the list that we already had from departments, present that to the board in two weeks, when we have maybe a little bit more information if some of these projects are gonna make it deadline-wise, then we can talk about those, so that we have other items that may or may not drop off the list, and then also say, okay, let's prioritize that backup list.
And I, I've talked a little bit, vehicles, we're still waiting on that master plan on Ed. We have a lot of vehicles, if we could buy vehicles and be ten that ten years down the road, without having to purchase them every year and stuff like that, that's just something that I thought about.
I believe Kyle is about ready to have that discussion, aren't they, Shanda?
I think he's hoping next week.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, so.
Did you say it's on the agenda for next week, or will be?
No, I think he's hoping for next week.
Okay, yeah, we need to get it on the agenda next week, because if this is in two weeks, I'd love to have that discussion and then have this on the table in two weeks.
I'd just like to look at all our fleets, I mean, we have vehicles that are twenty-five years old and stuff, and if this is an opportunity to expend funds now and not have to worry about them for, for ten or fifteen years, I, I think that that should be something that we utilize or look at.
And he sent me that fleet list, I was supposed to look at it, but I haven't had time.
So.
The last thing I want you to look at, down towards the bottom, I've got some totals. We received seventeen million, fifty-five thousand dollars in ARPA funds. We still have, not taking up, one point two, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars available. That does not include the extra money we're gonna need for the E-pole books, nor does it include any money if we decided or could get the barns done this fiscal year. Below those numbers, there's the expenditure category items. We have six point, pretty much six point four million dollars, we're about four hundred and eight dollars short, but six million four in items that are within that expenditure category. We have six point, pretty much 6.4 million dollars, we're about $408 short, but 6,400,000 in items that are within that expenditure category. The general county revenue projects, we're at $10,303,000. That has to be at 10 million and no more. So that's where we need to find some money to reallocate into an expenditure category or just not spend $300 and return it. So that number's important to continue to watch and monitor.
We're going to figure out how to spend this money.
I talked to Dan and Ashley about when that project for Sixth Street comes out. Brian and I met on what qualifies for expenditure categories. And there is a safety, a public safety element that we think we can work out with Sixth Street. Just simply people not getting hit or.
Well, just like you say, sidewalks, handicap accessible, all those things. I mean, when we had the thaws and I was watching people try to cross them rain gutters that weren't draining. I mean, people were having to walk a half a block one way or the other to try to get across their, their handicap accessible and that kind of stuff too. I mean, I.
And as soon as we can get what the scope of that work will be, I need to meet with Brian and make sure he's, he and I can come to a consensus on what qualifies as public safety or if there's any other elements that we can work in. Stormwater is an area that we can work on, so if there's a parking lot over here that needs redone because of drainage, I think we could probably fit that into the category, same thing with Sixth Street. And so Dan and I kind of talked about those things. But again, I need, we need to read categories about 303,000, so that's that bottom number that's in red.
Okay. Ernie, I'm curious, I would still like to talk about, like that project above elections. It's definitely something that is going to need to be done in phases, but I still don't like the kids having, being up there. So it might be an option of using that money to find a place that is a better location for them, that's still within the, within the realm of, in the area.
I'm not against building over by the village in that side. I know some people have different ideas, but, but I think that we could utilize funds, parking, and, and we're still within the campus for security reasons and the bit. I mean, after going up there and talking and their concerns about security and their concerns about the locations and where they walk these youth now. Yeah, if we go off campus and go someplace, we could, but, yes, ma'am.
As, as Dan and I were talking, what about a modular and we just put it at the village? It'd be faster than a built.
That's what we'd have to do.
And we've talked about that.
And that could be, that million two could be reallocated for something like that. And then if it could get done or under contract to be done, then there you go. Even if not all million two would be spent, I can't remember what modulars were.
And just looking at it and stuff, I mean, some of the concerns that they had is, is like an outside place for the PEE and physical education stuff. I mean, we could, I, just looking at it, we could make a wall and have, have it private a little bit, but also, I don't know, that's.
But the more changes that we're, as we're getting closer to that deadline and things start to drop off and decisions don't get made in meetings, that's where I start to get a little worried that the money's going to end up getting turned back. So we need to be decisive and.
I can tell you, everybody around this table has the same concerns, Dan. You're not alone. And out there. All right, thank you very much. Sure appreciate that.
I'll be back in two weeks.
Yeah, so put your thinking caps on, look at this and bring back information that you feel that we need to expedite these things. All right? With that being said, we're at reset.